Called December 12, 2023 Town Council meeting to order. Ms. Town Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Winkler? Councilmember Trolinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Here.
And we have Mayor James virtually. We have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you all would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting. Thank you. I trust that Town Council has had the opportunity to review the meeting agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we accept the agenda, approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Okay, do I have a second? Second? Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Seeing none opposed. I trust that you guys have all seen the minutes from November 28, 2023 meeting. Are there any additions or amended changes to those minutes as presented?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Trying to get to the page. There was a question that was asked of the Mayor, Mayor James asked chief if the cameras had been put up. And he said no, but in the minutes it states that he said yes. So that needs to be corrected.
Okay, I recall that discussion. That is a significant difference. Madam Clerk, can we make those adjustments to the minutes?
Absolutely, we can.
Okay. Any other amendments to the minutes as presented? No? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the meeting of November 28, 2023 with the amended changes suggested by Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Say aye? Oh, yes. Yes. Apologize, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I move that we accept the minutes for November 28, 2023 with the stated corrections.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman. All those in favor of approving the minutes with the amendments as suggested by Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, hearing none. This brings us to our public comment. If there are any here today that are wanting to be heard, please keep your comments to three minutes. Let us know if you are in the incorporated town. Has anyone signed up to make any statements today or comments?
No, sir, none.
Okay. Moving forward, this brings us to matters of council discussion. Mr. Manuel, I see we've gotten an addendum to the La Plata Library ground lease.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, Town Council, this came before you and we were making amendments to the signature page. This lease amendment addendum is requested by the county in order for them to evaluate the property and not eliminate themselves from a particular funding mechanism provided by the state of Maryland. They believe this language will allow for them to evaluate the property in a manner that will be consistent with the desires of specific funding at the state level. So they are requesting this amendment therefore so that they may provide the evaluation necessary to enable them to, in the future, potentially file for grant funding for the, potentially the design, construction, or even outfitting of the library. It's a very broad funding mechanism through the state that they don't want to eliminate themselves from.
Okay, and this is the agenda item that was originally placed on November 21st meeting?
Correct.
And made changes as requested by Town Council to more align appropriately with our town charter.
Correct.
Any comments from Town Council or questions?
No. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
So, Mr. Manuel, has this addendum been reviewed and does our attorney agree with the intent and the content of the addendum?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Just, I guess, a clarification question. With the new article that was inserted in the language, I'm assuming they still have to comply and notify us when they're doing permit activity on the property, correct?
Yes.
That doesn't change that?
Yes.
Okay. And then just for, I guess, our education, do we know where they are in the process of any design and construction of the library?
I'm not. Ms. Minor would probably better be able to address that. She is actively participating on, I think it's a monthly, if not bimonthly, call with the county regarding the library. I understand, obviously, they haven't started construction, so I'd imagine they're still in some sort of design work. And I know they're investigating, is it Maple Avenue? Currently, that right-of-way, and there's been some questions that have come up. So they are working on it. We've communicated with them this week regarding, as I said, Maple Avenue. So it's definitely a work in progress. Maybe not the library, but the overall land bay that they're looking to develop, which included a separate sort of satellite off-street parking lot across from the future extension of Talbot. So, yeah, it's a work in progress.
Thank you, because I asked because I've had several inquiries about this general knowledge of where they are in the process. Thank you.
I know Ms. Minor is on the call. Ms. Minor, is there any additional insight that you care to share as to Councilman Jenkins' inquiry?
Unfortunately, not. What Town Manager Manuel said was exactly what's going on. We haven't actually met for the last two or three months. The county still has some things that they need to be working on, and the right-of-way issue on Maple Avenue is one of the new stumbling blocks as well.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or concerns? Madam Mayor, sometimes I'll just pop in and ask you just to make sure I don't miss a hand raise.
No, I'm fine. Thank you very much.
Okay. And, Mr. Manuel, my understanding is that you're looking for consensus to move this to legislation later on in our agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Council if we are in favor to present this to matters of legislation moving forward. Councilman Winkler?
I have no objection.
Okay. Ward, too, I am in support of this. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I'm in support of this.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, in support.
Madam Mayor?
I am fine with it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Which brings us next to Town Council meeting calendar and budget calendar with Director Phipps and Ms. Larson. Thank you for being available to present us these new options. Director Phipps?
Mayor Pro Tem, Madam Mayor, esteemed Town Council, I, you have before you the memo, I assume, and two options for meeting calendars for the Town Council for next year. Just briefly, let me say that, as far as just breaking this down to the quickest, both versions include budget-related meetings as laid out by the Town Treasurer. That includes the budget discussions and public hearings that are required by law. Both options gave a summer vacation in July, so taking July off as a hiatus, and both incorrectly show the Fall Conference in October, which the MML Fall Conference is actually the first week of November. An additional complication on the July issue. According to Charter, the Town Council is required to meet no less than one time per month. As it happens, July in 2024 has five Tuesdays, so you could still take that meeting on that last Tuesday and have a month vacation. So, yay. The main differences between these two draft calendars is that option one has, offers two meetings per month after the budget has been approved and adopted. And then option two has three meetings per month, just as we have been so far. That's it. Those are the main differences between those two. And obviously, the draft calendars would need to be adjusted before adoption by the Town Council because they both have that July link.
So it would be July 30th if we went with the last July?
Correct.
Date? Questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. What's the rationale? How did this come about?
Through numerous conversations throughout the year. Some are from the mayor, some are from various members of Town Council as far as how frequently meet, we meet, or how frequently we should meet. Conversations at the Fall Festival, the Fall Conference regarding the frequency of meetings. Numerous municipalities meet once or twice a month. Numerous, much larger municipalities meet once a month. We have been meeting three times a month, which, it's not criticism, it just, that's the going trends.
Mr. Manuel, did you have any insight as to context or background?
I think Kelly did a good job sort of explaining, you know, a lot of larger localities meet twice a month, and we are meeting three times a month, which means we have to roll it out and roll it up three times a month. There's a lot of staff time that's associated with preparing an agenda as well as sort of the minutes to go with it as far as managing staff time, but also your time. You know, you look at tonight's agenda, it's pretty light. If we could meet twice a month for an hour and a half as opposed to three times, twice a month for an hour and a half as opposed to three times one-hour meetings, I think it would be beneficial to the internal organization as I think as well as your time just because there is a lot of work that goes into sort of conducting one of these meetings behind the scenes that our staff is undertaking. Now, there may be an instance where we require to have an additional meeting a month, which our with Charter as well as our, I guess, our rules of procedure allow for a path to do that. But in the event of on, you know, one of the reasons we ramped up to three meetings a month, we used to do two work sessions and one public meeting a month was because of the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act monies, and we were getting into situations where we were getting quotes, and before we could get them to Council to approve them, I think Councilwoman Bryant Ward was our quote watcher. She would be advising us that our quotes had expired, and we would have to go back and get those updated. So we went to a more fluid, three-times-a-month meeting, went away from the work session schedule, which I think there's some advantages to having a work schedule. I think, I don't want to speak for Councilman Jenkins, but I think he would also agree. But in, you know, the main thing is, is just the workflow and trying to maximize everyone's time. I've done this for over 25 years, and I've never worked for a locality that worked more than 20, or met more than twice a month. Was, that was seen as a lot, twice, and we're doing it three times a month.
Thank you for that input, Mr. Manuel. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, and I appreciate that perspective, and I certainly empathize with respect to behind-the-scenes hard work by the staff to get different items lined up and prepped and all that. That's very appreciative. I guess I'm torn because, in hindsight now, I like the work sessions from my perspective because hopefully it would allow us to perhaps have focus, one or two focused discussions on a particular issue or concern that is facing the town, not only in the midterm but in the long term. So I would hope that we could think about work sessions so we could focus on, be more, frankly, be more proactive in how we look at problems because unfortunately, the way it is now, the governing is a lot more complicated than it used to be. I guess I'm showing my age here. But, and so I just would hope, I'm torn, but I, frankly, am leaning toward option two because I think we could have more agenda items that could have us talk about specific issues of concern in the town as we look forward to the future, given what's going on in the town today, so we can be more proactive. Thank you.
Does, excuse, does this preclude us from having additional meetings on an as-needed basis if we only do option two, which is two times per month? Is it two, or is it, is it, is it a one or the other? Or if we select to do two times per month, but the need arises where we need to meet a third time for a work session? Because I agree, if you have the opportunity to have a focused discussion on a matter that's important, it's obviously important.
I'm sorry, Councilman, I missed my cue on that one. I thought I was supposed to answer that. No.
No, it is, so I guess my question is, is there's a, there's, I look at it from the perspective of, of there's activity and there's productivity. And if we can streamline the meetings to an hour and a half to be more productive, I would say I'm in contrition. And if the need arises for us to have a, a work session or a third meeting in a month, does that option eliminate that possibility?
There is always an option to schedule a meeting out of, outside of the schedule.
Yeah.
So, and to clarify, Councilman, I think option two retains the current schedule.
Correct.
But for, but for July.
But, but for July.
But for July. But I think your question is a, is a good one, and that, and Director Phipps, we talked about this a little bit previously. The mechanism for requesting an additional meeting, could you enlighten Council just as to what the procedure is for that? If, for example, we went to the two meeting per month as the norm, how would a council member or the mayor or the town manager request for that third meeting?
Certainly. In writing, either the mayor, the town can, the town manager, or a majority of the council can request a special meeting. So it would be just as easy as if the mayor saw the, saw fit to call a special meeting, she could do it, the town manager could do it. If a majority of the council wrote into the town manager, again, we could call a special meeting that way.
I think a follow-up question as to the mechanism. Given the current way we have agenda items, quote-unquote, approved for the agenda, would then the agenda have to be approved if you've got a majority of council requesting a special meeting? Because we've got a little bit of a wrinkle there as to maybe our mechanism predating the new way we have agenda items approved, and we may not know the answer to that tonight.
I do not have the answer to that tonight, sir.
A little bit of a pretzel.
That, that is.
Yeah, sorry about that. Madam Mayor, I'm sure you have some comments on this. It sounds like you are more leaning towards option one.
I love that there is an option to add more meetings should we need it. But to have a meeting, just to have a meeting, I'm not in favor of that because it does take a lot of staff time. So I would lean more towards one, making sure that we do have the option to add meetings should it be necessary.
Thank you.
Councilman, if I can, if I may?
Yes.
As far as the adding the subject, the topic, we may need to revisit the agenda item process and then adjust that in the rules of procedure in the, in the annual review of the Town Council Rules of Procedure in January.
I think that's wise. I think that's the only way this would make any sense because otherwise we would never really have the ability unless, just because the way it's set, right? Because, and, and, you know, I don't think the mayor has ever disapproved an agenda item request per se, but, you know, say it's not our mayor, it's someone else, that would, that would cause like an almost automatic stoppage of maybe the will of council if there were three or four wanting it and one not wanting it. So I think that's a wise idea to look at the agenda approval process as part of what we want to do later on. But as it stands, are there any other comments or concerns? Yes, Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Trolinger, Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for highlighting the issue of the agenda request process because I know there are at least five or six that I've made that due to other circumstances, which I'm not fully aware of, have not been acted upon, and several of them are about a year old. So that concerns me, very frankly. Having, but understanding the stress and the time requirement for staff, I, again, I empathize with that because you may not believe this, I used to do that too, so I get it. But I just have a sense that, for me at least, I wish we would have opportunity for discussion of critical issues. And very frankly, again, from my perspective, you know, we're elected to serve. And so and I'm not suggesting we meet just to meet, it has to be something that is pressing us. So I would just have that concern about the agenda request process as well. Thank you. I appreciate your feedback. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, so I think we have, we're mixing up the issues. We haven't had work sessions in over a year. We eliminated those initially when we took office, maybe a couple of months afterwards, and we, and all of them became meetings. So we haven't had the work session. So I think one issue is the fact that, and Councilman Jenkins has shared it many times, we don't have an opportunity to talk about things proactively. We always have an agenda, we're coming before the public, and we're having these meetings. And so he doesn't feel that there's an opportunity to have open discussions. So that's one issue. But the meeting schedule is a totally different issue. And I think many of us are not exercising our authority. Again, there are two ways to get, three ways to get things on the agenda. Through Madam Mayor, who is the chair of our council, through Mr. Manuel, the town manager, and then by consensus amongst us. If there's something you want, then you come and ask the council members if they agree and support it, and it can be on the agenda. So I think those are two different issues. The schedule is one thing. We have had meetings where we've come here and we were here for 30 minutes. Staff has been here all day, and they waited around for this meeting to occur for 30 minutes, 27, 28 minutes, and then they got to go home. So I am in support of, you know, reducing the meeting frequency with the fact that we do have an option, should there be a need to have a special meeting, we can call it. We've done it before. So I don't see a problem with schedule one. I'm going to miss seeing you.
Not all of us, right? I mean, some of us, to be fair. Point of clarification, right, Councilman? Anything? Madam Mayor, any further comments?
No, thank you. I think it's all been said.
Okay. Mr. Manuel, is there a recommendation by the town manager here or, or no?
I don't have a recommendation other than I also favor the first schedule that Kelly option one, I guess, is how it would be more specifically stated, and just need a consensus from council as to which option you would like to move forward to legislation.
Before we get into that, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, do you have another comment?
Question. Since we are required to meet, to meet at least once, should we, instead of having no regular meetings in July, put the one meeting on the calendar so that we are in compliance with our town code?
With Charter.
Right. So that presumably, as stated, would be the July 30th date?
Correct.
That last Tuesday of July. And this is, either option is subject to the changing of, I think, the calendar as it relates to the MML date.
Correct.
But make most sense to just go ahead and, and get a consensus on whether option one is what the Town Council is in favor of rather than do one versus two? Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Okay. Presenting option one with the understanding that we will be including a meeting date in July to conform to the town charter as well as amending it with relation to the MML date in the fall. Councilman Winkler, do you support option one moving forward with meeting regularly the second and fourth Tuesdays?
I support option one.
Okay. I do as well as council member, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I support option one with the addition of July 30th to the schedule.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jenkins? Okay. So you are not in support of option one? Correct. Thank you. Madam Mayor?
And I support option one, but would recommend not bringing it to legislation for approval today until we have a clean copy and bring it to legislation next week.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manuel, is that?
It's the bill of the council if you want to take the mayor's recommendation. There's sort of, you know, we have, there's no real, you know, it's a consensus, so it's sort of uncharted territory. We have one council member who wants to include, obviously, the provision of July 30th being the amendment to July 30th. If it's the will of council to clean up the document and bring it back next week, then maybe you want to take another consensus, whether you want to bring it back next week or you're comfortable with approving it tonight with the amendment of July 30th.
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I think it was understood that the addition would be July 30th. Is there any, is there any? July 30th?
There is another error on that with the MML conference conflict saying it's in October. So with, having to addition, two amendments on that, that's why I would feel more comfortable having a clean copy. Adding one date's not a big deal, but also where it says the, for the calendar where it references MML for October, the Fall Conference, that is supposed to be in November. I think that that just makes it a little more clean. But if it's the will of the council to move it forward today, I've stated my position, I am fine either way.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate your comments and concerns. I think we need to address that. Councilman Winkler, would you prefer a clean copy and vote on this again at our next meeting? Or are you comfortable with the amendments as stated multiple times that July 30th would be the July date? And we know that we need to change the MML date in November as presented by Director Phipps?
If it requires a clean copy, then of course we would need, but if we can move forward today by adding the July 30th and moving the MML to November, I'm fine with, with today, just from, you know, let's move things forward.
Yeah, and, and I, I support that as well. I, I mean, Mr. Manuel, unless there's any administrative issue here, it seems more clerical than anything else. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I support moving it forward with, with the understanding that we're going to make the corrections.
Councilman Jenkins?
I would support, as Mayor James said, just have a clean copy. So it's in writing and we're doing the right process. So it's crystal clear about the dates.
I appreciate that, Councilman Jenkins. And Madam Mayor?
You know my position, but majority rules, and I'm fine with that.
Okay. So we have three in favor, two want to push it back. So this will move to matters of legislation. Mr. Manuel?
Well, there we are. Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, Town Council, Legislation, first item 5.1, Resolution 23-41. Addendum to La Plata Library Ground Lease. This item is for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning addendum to La Plata Library Ground Lease for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to amend a ground lease between the County Commissioners of Charles County, Maryland for real property located in the town of La Plata and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Manuel. Do I have a motion with regards to Resolution 23-41? Do I have a motion with regards to Resolution 2341?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 23-31, addendum to La Plata Library Ground Lease.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Very good. I heard Councilman Winkler first. All those in favor of Resolution 2341, addendum to La Plata Library Ground Lease? Sorry. Oh, sorry. I, I, I heard whispering, I wasn't sure if I had trampled on anyone's rights. All those opposed? Okay, hearing none. Resolution 2341 passes. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, next item is Resolution 23-42, the 2024 Town Council Meeting Calendar. This item is also for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning La Plata Town Council 2024 Regular Meeting Schedule for the purpose of maintaining a regulated and publicly accessible schedule of Town Council meetings.
Okay. And to be clear, Mr. Manuel, this is for consideration with the understanding of adding a July 30th date to be in compliance with our town charter for having one regularly scheduled meeting in July as well as amending the calendar to reflect the accurate date of the November MML conference.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion regarding Resolution 2342, 2024 Town Council Meeting Calendar?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we adopt Resolution 23-42, 2024 Town Council Meeting Calendars with the stated corrections and additions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. All those in favor of Resolution 2342, 2024 Town Council Meeting Calendar with the stated addendums by Director Phipps and Mr. Manuel, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. We do a roll call just to be clear on that?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Is that administered by the town clerk?
Yeah, the town clerk can provide a roll call.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Winkler?
Aye.
Councilman Trolender?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
No.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Resolution 2342 is passed. This brings us to new business. This time, we're going to address commission reports. Councilman Winkler, I, do you have, I don't know that you've been assigned a commission yet.
I have not been assigned a commission yet.
All right, so I'll leave that for.
So I have nothing to report.
Okay, that's easy. So I know that Madam Mayor and you have some homework probably for you guys to discuss, so I'll pass. I do not have a new report at this time. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
The planning commission met and we appointed a new chair, Gregory Sampson, and a new co-chair, Don Banks. Stagecoach came before us, not Stagecoach, I'm sorry. Speaker Chase came before us to extend their preliminary plat, and that was approved. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. The Auction Recreation Commission is meeting tomorrow morning at o'clock dark 30, 7:30 virtually. That's when we meet. We're going to be discussing the Wells Park Amphitheater and some other related issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. The Design Review Board did not meet due to no applicants requesting a meeting. And believe it or not, mark this day, I don't have anything else to report for upcoming. I will, I will double down next week, though. Thank you, that is my report.
Thank you. I did want to thank town staff for breakfast with Santa this weekend. That was a lot of fun for my kids. There was a particular Santa Claus that looked and sounded very familiar. He was very jolly, so I appreciate his efforts there in making Christmas a little bit more bright and cheery for all the kids that came out on Saturday. And of course, our volunteers and staff that made it. So it's a, it's such a memorable event. It's a, it's a little thing. Sometimes it's a secret for our residents, but everybody that goes really enjoys it. So at this time, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn the norm, no, excuse me, entertain a motion for a closed session immediately following this meeting. And I think I'm going to make that motion to institute a closed session with our statutory, statutory authority from 3305B7, the consultant counsel to obtain legal advice. The topic this evening is on Stagecoach crossing. Do I have a second?
I will second it.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, maybe do a roll call on that.
Okay, yeah. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Can we do a roll call? Yep.
Yes, sir. Councilman Winkler?
Aye.
Councilman Trolender?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Mayor James?
Aye.
Okay. And at this time, I believe the proper procedure, Mr. Manuel, is to adjourn the regular business meeting and to go into closed session.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to, Jay's, I just sent him a message, so.
On call?
Yeah, we have to get out of this meeting and go to a separate, private link, so it'll take a few minutes, so yes.